Let's pray. Our most gracious and warm heavenly Father, we thank you to stay. Thank you for all our many blessings. We thank these commissioners. Ask you to bless them as they make decisions affecting the entire county. Christ name we pray.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, in the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with its justice.
We'd like to thank everybody for coming out today. And before we get started with our regular meeting, we'd like to call Mr. James Kennedy to the front. Mr. James, we would like to give you the recognition of your eight years of hard work, commitment, and dedication to Gulf County veterans and their families. Presented on this day of 24th, day of September 2013, we want to take your thanks.
I appreciate you, Commissioner. Your job well done. Well done. Thank you, War. I'd like to thank the board for the support for the past eight-plus years. It's been fun. It's been a pleasure to be able to support the veterans of this county. And I would just ask, did you give my replacement the same support and support veterans because they paid the price for you to be able to sit where you're sitting?
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. I'd like to introduce Joe Paul. He is my replacement. And again, give him the support, and I would certainly appreciate it. And again, thank all of you for your support to me.
Thank you again. At this time, we go... Can I get a motion to accept our conciliatory agenda?
A moment, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Mr. McLemore.
Second.
Got a second by Ms. Bryant. Do I have any objections? Objection? Motion passed. O and no.
Mr. Chairman, the first thing on the agenda this morning is Pages 116 and 117 of your agenda for the preferred governmental insurance trust invoice. If you'll look on page 116, this, we need board approval and place to pay for this invoice, unexpected expenses this year. $10,000 deductible in reference to the litigation with James Garth. And I need board approval and a place to pay that invoice, please.
What's come from Ms. Lynn? Do I have anything from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I'm in order.
McDaniel?
This is the settlement in the litigation. Correct there?
It's the deductible for that litigation.
My question is, is this James Garth versus the Florida County?
Correct. Yes, sir.
It was also included in there, James Garth versus individuals. Am I correct there or not? Commissioner McLemore, didn't you have a...
Yeah, yes.
Is it included in this, or is that coming again?
Brett can answer that better than I.
Okay. This, from what I understand, this is for the whole suit. We have a $10,000 deductible. And we, if you'll look on that next page, it'll show a total of $15,000.
$125,000 and change.
Right. That's the total cost of litigation. Up to our, we owe $10,000 of that.
That's our deductible.
Right.
On this. What's this, if you may? What's out here in... Oh, I see reserves, 39,000. Now the 55. Okay.
Now that the case is closed, it's done. But the total was the $15,000. We owe 10 of it toward it being our deductible.
Okay. Next question, and I yield.
And Commissioner, that's an unexpected expense.
That's where I'm going.
So we don't know. We need a place to pay that from.
Where? Let me turn over to my clerk here, Commissioner Norris. How do you do this? Great. Where are we gonna, do we have, where are we gonna get this $10,000 to pay this?
That's a good question, Commissioner.
Can I comment on that?
Because I didn't, I wasn't prepared and didn't know you were gonna ask me that question. So I've not reviewed the budget and I can't answer that.
Well, it doesn't have to be paid today. We can table it the next. But I yield to Commissioner.
Okay. I just want to make it to the public. This is what this PAC is good for. They costing us $10,000 here. The only place we have to pay this from is out of our reserves, Mr. McDaniel.
That's a good team, Mr. McLemore.
It's $15,000.
For us, the total bill was $15,000. We gotta pay the $10,000 deductible. That's our deductible.
Yeah. But...
Total bill was $15,000, $125,000. And I don't know, it may elevate our insurance.
But what this PAC group is, I'm gonna go a little bit further with this. You know, they advertise that they favor better government and promoting Gulf County government and this and that. All they doing is costing the taxpayers money. This is money we don't have. This is money that we happen to go into the reserves for this lawsuit that was no good from day one. I just want the public to know that. And a little bit further with that, we're probably fixing to get into another lawsuit because of Ms. Bryant. It right here, the last board meeting, we had a gentleman right there that said that he was gonna file a lawsuit against us. When he said that, our attorney recommended to this board, no further discussion. No more. If Brian choose to go another 15 or 20 minutes with us. So we're probably looking at another lawsuit of money that we don't have.
Commissioner McLemore, the truth is an absolute defense. And the public has a right to know about the contracts that we enter into. There's nothing litigious about talking about our contracts and the situation with our contractors.
But whenever our attorney, whenever our attorney sits there, yeah, we having an attorney. He sits right there. It's not you. And when he sits right there and he advises this board to not to discuss the issue any further, well, that's what we should do.
And the attorney advises the board. He does not run the board. And I don't work for you. And I don't work for the attorney. I work for the people of Gulf County.
You work for the PAC group, which amounts to about 10 or 12 people. Because I get all your phone calls from District 3. I gotta go fix your boat docks. I gotta go dig your ditches. You must be over in Bay County because that's the rumor out there.
I'm not playing this game with you. I get calls for your folks to...
I'm not playing games either. I'm serious as I can be.
Have you taken care of one of the best assets you have in your district?
I take care, I take care of the whole county.
It's a shame that you don't...
Especially your district. I get more, I get more calls out of your district than I do mine.
You can attack all you want.
Hold up, guys. Come on, guys. Come on. I understand right now, we all kinda upset 'cause to me, we spending a little money that's unnecessarily. We finna spend money right here. And plus, I don't agree with the countywide issue because we settled that wide by, we finna spend another $10,000 or $15,000 behind that. So actually, we here, we finna come up with some money that we got to come up with from somewhere.
And can I comment on that just a little bit? The Voters Act that the new law just passed, you and attorney, you should know about it. There's no way we can win that countywide lawsuit. But yet, we're gonna sit here and spend $12,000 to hire an attorney to look a little bit further into it? That's what's costing the county money.
Again, you either don't understand the law or choose to ignore it.
Oh, I understand a little bit better than you do. I believe, and I don't have a disagree on it. Because I've got some common sense here.
It's a three-part test. And all we are doing is spending some money to see if we still meet the first prong of the three-part test. It's very simple and logical.
And all you gotta do is look at the Voters Act that the legislation passed. It resolves the issue right there.
I'm not arguing with you. You don't get it.
Mr. Mike, Mr. McDaniel, would you like to, would you like to table this issue until this Becky could get back with us?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, we have had a chance to look. Excuse me for interrupting your conversation, Commissioner Ward. In this year that we're in, we did have a budgeted amount for the downtown redevelopment agency, an amount of $150,000. That, once you set the millage rate, your actual exposure to that was only $124,301. So you do have a little bit of money in there, $25,000 and change, that we could move to the appropriate line item by a budget amendment and pay it from there. If that's the board's wishes instead of...
Or we could take that $25,000 that we don't have, and we could lower the millage a little bit further at the end of the day with our budget.
This is in this one, not the upcoming.
Mr. Chairman, motion in order.
What is the motion on this?
Our motion is that we just table this. It doesn't have to be paid in the next 24 hours. Table this.
I'll second that motion.
I got a motion by Mr. McDaniel. I got a second by Ms. Bryant. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed. Motion carries four and no. Table to the...
Mr. Chairman, on your agenda this morning, Ms. Kristi McElroy, in reference to the Constitution, the law, and ethics.
Hold up for a minute, Ms. Kristi. Did we ever get a motion to accept the conciliatory agenda?
Yes, we did, sir.
Yeah, it's passed.
And we need to do that. Okay.
We do.
All right, Ms.
Morning.
Morning.
Kristi McElroy, 1311 Woodward Avenue, Port St. Joe, Florida. I'm going to kind of run through some things. And whether you guys give me the time here or at the end with citizens, because I need to get through this. So I hope that, you know, you'll respect the flow. About 51 years ago, on September 30, 1962, JFK sent 500 U.S. Marshals to Oxford, Mississippi, in order to ensure the safe enrollment of James Meredith, the first African-American student subbed into University of Mississippi Law School. The dean at the time was Robert Farley. And Dean Farley understood the process and the purpose. He knew James Meredith earned the right to attend Ole Miss Law School, and it was the law. Dean Farley had a legal and ethical obligation. He stood up against chaos, controversy, and bullies in order to follow the law and the rights of James Meredith. And I admire that courage. Dean Farley was my great uncle. He was Uncle Bob. From my family, he was the second dean of law at Ole Miss. My great-grandfather, his father Jerome Farley, being the first. We're in our sixth generation of family members attending and graduating from Ole Miss. I share this with you because it does humble me. And this is who my family is and what they've stood for. And it very much influences me. Today, I've requested to speak on three topics: Constitution, the law, and ethics. And I'm going to narrow my scope because they're so huge. And I would like to give some examples. But the Constitution and my freedom of speech set forth in the Bill of Rights, in the First Amendment, in order that there be no abuse of power or tyranny by our government, and to ensure the rights of an individual. It's everyone's right. And lately, I believe there have been attempts to curtail my privilege of freedom of speech. The law, simply put, is a system of rules and guidelines which are enforced and through social institutions and government behavior, and governed by behavior. It shapes politics, economics, and society. And it also includes contractual arrangements that are enforcements of promises. Ethics are a symbol of moral principles, dealing with values relating to human conduct with respect to rightness and wrongness in certain actions. All elected entering office in Gulf County take an oath. All entering must solemnly swear to support and protect and defend the Constitution and the government of the U.S. and the state of Florida. And you will well and faithfully perform the duties of your office for Gulf County. Based off of this, I have several items of concern that need to be discussed here. The first item is the use of the TDC building. And this ties to contract law, ethics, and my freedom of speech to impart information. I have three new items I received and three items that I'm going to submit as well that were from the September 10 county meeting, even though they're already in the record. I'd like to have the consistency of flow. The first item is September 12, 2013, letter from Ms. Jennifer Jenkins to Don Butler and Jeremy Novak. It recaps the events that took place on April 20. This is from Jennifer to Don and Jeremy. Don, good morning. In response to recent discussions at September 10, 2013, DOC C meeting, please find below a recollection of conversation and happenings regarding the TDC building for the concealed carry permit class, April 20, 2013. A few weeks prior to the meeting, Gail Lawson Brook came to my office and asked permission to use the TDC conference room for a class. I told her I needed to speak to the county attorney to see if this was an allowable use of the conference room. A day or so later, I apologized to Gail noting I had not discussed the use of the conference room with Jeremy. Gail's response to me was to not worry that they didn't need the use of the building. On Friday, April 19, 2013, around 2:15 p.m., Gail and Commissioner Bryant came into my office, went into the conference room, looked around, and went to Gail's office. At that time, the Welcome Center was a mess as we were preparing to hang new photos and update the lobby. We had taped pictures all over the wall, and it was not pretty. On Saturday, April 20, Michelle Perrin and I met at the Welcome Center around 7:30 a.m.
I got a motion to extend the time. Got a motion by Mr. McLemore. Can I get a second?
I'll second, just for this.
And I vote against.
I got a motion.
Finish this.
The issue has been discussed and put to bed by this board. So I vote no.
I got a motion by Mr. McLemore. Got a second by Mr. McDaniel. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Motion carries three to one.
So I'll back up on Saturday. On Saturday, April 19, 2013, around two, excuse me, on Saturday, on April 20, Michelle Perrin and I met at the Welcome Center around 7:30, got our equipment, went to the St. Joe Club with Channel 17 to film. A bit after 10 a.m., we returned to the TDC to work and open the Welcome Center. As I pulled in, the driveway was packed with vehicles, and I had no idea what was going on. Upon coming up the back stairs, we noticed the lobby to the Welcome Center was full of people, and the class was being conducted. We entered the front door, had to walk through the conference room to the kitchen to get to our office. All the chairs from the conference room and our office had been brought into the lobby to accommodate the new, the members of the class. After trying to work about 20 minutes, Michelle and I left. There was simply too much noise, and we couldn't get our work done. And clearly, we couldn't open the Welcome Center. As I drove home, David Warner called me to ask what was happening at the WC. I told him, and he was wondering why I would schedule a meeting in the lobby on a day we were supposed to be open. I told him I knew nothing about the meeting and would find out. Apparently, Gail scheduled the meeting in our conference room via Crystal Fawn, who, after I spoke with her, was under the impression that I approved the meeting with Gail. I did not. While Gail was leasing her office space from us, she was allowed to use the conference room for PSJRA board meetings. During one of the TDC council meetings, the advisory board discussed the appropriate use of the TDC conference room for outside entities. I will search through my old minutes. And when I find the documentation on this discussion, I will forward it on to you. Please let me know if you have any questions. Jennifer Jenkins, Executive Director, Gulf County Tourist Development Council. Now, there's more. But it sounds like this board isn't interested in me continuing on...
May I make a comment on this?
Yes, sir.
This is an ongoing issue. Seems like we have discussed it. We've been beating it back and forth ever since the day it happened. If you, Ms. McElroy, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful or anybody else, or anybody on this board, there's people out there that can investigate this. If there's some wrongdoings, let them do the work. That's what they get paid for. You know, so if somebody, if we have problems with this issue, file the complaint. Let them do it.
May I just respond to that?
Yes, ma'am.
I think after all this time, you see that I come forth. I don't hide in the shadows or anything. And this does, needs to be investigated. I agree. But in respect to the taxpayers and the commission, and also the city, because there was a lease agreement that was clearly violated, I'm trying to do, in my mind, and I can't judge what others think, what is transparent and honest, and bring this forth. And whether you agree or disagree, that is my right. So I do have several other items. But obviously, I'll have to wait until the end and speak as a citizen, because they're different.
Chairman.
Ms. McElroy, I appreciate you coming and all in here. We've been beating this horse for three months. For three months, this board's moved, we've got people out there has very important things come before the board. We're handling this. This board is already, you learn from your mistakes. As I said in one of the other meetings, it's America's Stitch. That was a broken egg. You can't put Humpty Dumpty back together. But we can prevent another one from being broken. And that's the same thing right here. Let our attorney, let our staff, let our people that's in there, we got it. You learn from your mistakes. You learn and from there. And I'm not trying to cut you short. But we've got a lot of business to come for. Not that yours isn't important. It is very important. We do need to move along on this because we're all aware, we're aware of all of what you read here this morning. We are truly, this board is truly working and put guidelines in place where we won't be back in this same city. That's all. But I truly respect you, and I respect you coming here. And I appreciate you coming to these meetings.
Thank you.
But in the sake of time, we do have some very important things here.
I understand. And, you know, it was brought up about a lawsuit. And of course, I was sued as well. And, you know, I understand what you're saying. But one of the things as the public, if they don't understand what has happened historically, then a lot of times, you're destined to repeat those mistakes. And so although you may have had this communication, I think it's important that it go into the public record and that a citizen come before you and speak to it. And that's all I'm doing, Commissioner. Sure.
Thank you for your concerns. Mr. Butler?
Mr. Chair, got a couple of public hearings. One is on county probation services, Page 119. Mr. Chairman, let me say first, Mr. Yeager called me yesterday afternoon. He's attending a Pigeon Insurance Board meeting today, or en route to a board meeting today. That's why he's not here at this meeting. He's in Orlando. First public hearing, county probation services. Typically, what we do, we'll read the title to the ordinance, Page 119. An ordinance to the Board of County Commissioners of Gulf County, Florida, establishing probation services administrative fees, and entitled probation services fee for Gulf County, providing for repealer, conflicts, modifications that may arise from consideration of public hearing, severability, and providing for an effective date. With that read, on Page 120, you see the rates. One, offenders sentenced by county court in Gulf County should pay an initial one-time $1 administrative fee upon sentencing and formally entering the county probation program. Two, offenders sentenced by Gulf County Court in Gulf County should pay a monthly probation administrative fee of $50 per month in the county probation program. So that's the first public hearing to do with probation services and then fee. I would ask for public comment. And this is county commission setting the rates, officially setting the rates for probation services.
Having a public comments?
Mr. Chairman, second public hearing to pretrial release ordinance, Page 123. Again, the title of that ordinance, an ordinance to the Board of County Commissioners of Gulf County, Florida, establishing pretrial release administrative fees, and entitled pretrial release administrative service fee for Gulf County, providing for repealer, conflicts, modifications that may arise from consideration of public hearing, severability, and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me for interrupting. I think we need to vote on these ordinances separately. You called for public comment on the first one.
A moment for the first one.
Okay, I got a motion by Mr. McLemore.
I'll second.
Got a second by Mr. McDaniel. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed?
Yeah.
No opposed, motion carries four and no.
Thank you. I'm sorry for interrupting.
No problem. Thank you.
Say, we're a pretrial release ordinance, Page 123. And if you so desire, I'll read that title. Ordinance to the Board of County Commissioners of Gulf County, Florida, establishing pretrial release administrative fees, and entitled pretrial release administrative service fee for Gulf County, providing for repealer, conflicts, modifications that may arise from consideration of public hearing, severability, and providing for an effective date. On the next page, Page 124, you see the rates. Number one, offenders sentenced by county court in Gulf County should pay an initial one-time $10 administrative fee upon sentencing and formally entering the county pretrial release program. Number two, offenders sentenced by Gulf County Court in Gulf County should pay a monthly pretrial release administrative fee of $50 per month while in the county pretrial release program.
Do I have any public comments? Do I have any public comments?
A moment.
Got a motion by Mr. McLemore.
Second.
Second by Mr. McDaniel. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries four and no.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, there's several items from the recommendations from the PDRB. The first one is variance by Thomas Apollo Bush. That was tabled. On the second one, it's variance by Kay Ingram O'Brien for parcel ID number 06291-345R located in Section 22, Township 9 South, Range 11 West, Gulf County, Florida, encroachment to a side setback on existing house. By 4-0 vote, the PDRB recommend approval of the variance to allow an elevator to be placed in the setback. And is there any public comment for your consideration?
A moment, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Mr. McLemore.
Second.
Got a second by Ms. Bryant. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries four and no.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. There's a variance by Linda Gerald, parcel ID number 06268-302R located in Section 20, Township 9 South, Range 11 West, Gulf County, Florida, existing piling encroachment of six inches into the side setback on ECL property.
and to the side setback on ECL property. By a 3-0 vote with one abstaining, PDRB recommends approval of an ECL property that had ponds encroaching and to the side setback by six inches. Any public comment?
No public comment. Can I get a motion?
A move, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Mr. Michael Moore.
Second for question.
Second for questioning by Mr.?
Yeah, Mr. Richardson. Mr. Richardson. Section 22, Township nine south, range west. Would it be better if we gave a general location of where this is? I don't know if it's in Weahatchika or out on the Cape or Jones Homestead. Just?
It's near to Stumplo.
Okay. All right, that's on number three, is that correct?
Number three, yes.
What about the one we just voted on? If I'm in order on that one, number two?
It's in the boardwalk, serve side, I think, community.
Okay, well, that's good. People out there might want to know where this is taken. And you'd have to go look up these range and sections and all. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Mr. Michael Moore. Got a second by Mr. Mike Daniel. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries four and no.
Mr. Chairman? We've had a request to speak, Mr. Tom Sims, in reference to restryping County Road 386.
Hold up, hold up. We're not, we got a left. Mr. David.
Got about three more, Lynn.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem. The next one is preliminary party approval for minor subdivision, Tyler W. Smith, for parcel ID number 06268-025R and 06268-022R located in section 7, township nine south, range 11 west, Gulf County, Florida, 2.2 acres, a six-unit development with no road infrastructure. This is on upper end of the Cape. I think basically between Ovation and Area Dunes in that area. It's on the Gulf.
On the Gulf, sir.
Yes, sir. And by the two to two vote, the PDRB failed to carry a motion for the preliminary subdivision approval. Then they readjust, readjust, excuse me, readdressed the situation. By a 4-0 vote, the PDRB recommends a density approval for six units contingent upon a sectoral vehicle access. And for a public comment.
Public comment? No public comment. Can I get a motion by the board?
A move, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Mr. Michael Moore. Can I get a second? Second, second for discussion?
Question. Oh, yeah, for discussion here.
Got a second by discussion?
Thought you had a tie vote on here, and then you went a 4-0 approval for the six unit. Unacceptable vehicle access.
The subdivision is based off a flag lot system, and there were several flags, and they were real concerned about it. The engineer is going to readdress them and come back to the PDRB for verification. That's reason for the second vote.
I would suggest possibly tabling this vote until that issue is resolved. I'll make a motion to table it.
Got a motion by?
Well, I got to withdraw my second here. But I'll redraw.
Hold up, guys, hold up, guys, hold up. We got a second for discussion here.
I'll withdraw the second.
I withdraw the second. I got a motion by Mr. Michael Moore. Can I get a second? Got a motion by Mr. Michael Moore. Can I get a second? Motion fails for lack of second.
I will make a motion to table this issue until the access issue is resolved.
Got a motion by Ms. Bryant. Can I get a second?
I'll second that motion.
Got a second by Mr. Mike Daniel. Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries three and one. Hold up, one. Come on up.
This number.
Just to address the Tyler Smith, I'm Jack Housman, Southeast Asian Consulting Engineers. The preliminary plat process is a density check only. And we took the comments from the planning board, and we're going to address those for in the October meeting. So we were going to address all of those comments, including the easements, all the flag lots, and the entire layout. So I'm going to make sure that was stated. The preliminary plat process is a density check only. We have three units per acre allowable, and we have, excuse me, we have six units on 2.3 acres. So.
Does our vote to table it prevent you from moving forward with the next step?
Not that I'm aware of. I just want to make sure that was, that we were, that everybody understood what was going on.
I didn't know. Wow, you're talking about this is on number four.
There's really no basis to table it on that grant because you're not dealing with the roads until you, I don't play. The only basis is to set density based on a certified survey of the property to say that it meets density, so this.
As that was completed.
That's, that's why they voted 4-0 to have a side that later. To set density for that property is the only thing preliminary.
And all of the comments that we're taking, we're taking as constructive criticism. We're going to address all of those items.
Tabling it's just slowing up progress.
Apparently, it's not slowing the process. And we are dealing currently with issues in the county with other subdivisions that have been plotted that have no access. And I know that you would not move forward with a subdivision of that nature. But I believe because we don't really have enough information here at the board, and we won't prevent you from moving forward, I still think that we should table it and look forward to seeing you for the board again.
Motion stands?
Yes.
Motion stands. We'll table it. Get back with Mr. David.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I thought I.
I want to make a comment here.
Hold up, Ms. David.
Please.
Yes, sir.
On this issue right here is confusion. I would have really have loved to have been given a little heads up. I mean, here I am, got to make, yeah. I said, having to make a basically decision on this vote here, I wish I'd have had a little more information on this. No one's talked with me, contacted me on this. And when I see this two-two vote here where it failed and right below it, I see a 4-0 vote, that kind of throws a red flag on me. I'd maybe a little clarification would help things along.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll address that issue. I, being as a liaison between the board and this, I try to present. I got a new phone. I don't learn it yet. I'm one of those rabbit phone people. Mr. Housman is correct. Generally, it's, at preliminary, we establish the, you give a conceptual design, you establish the density. And board, in looking over the presented plat, was concerned about it. And it was addressed and brought up. And I just, the main reason for giving the two-two is showed that they was under discussion and that there was concerns. And that was the main reason for that. But, and then they went ahead and after explained it really density is the issue. They went ahead and voted for the oh. But there was concerns, and there's still probably going to still be concerns until we get to the final stage. So that's reason to come at the next meeting. So it's, it just, it just means that the board has not approved the density. But the project's going to go for next, at the next PDRB in October. Come back up. It just delays it a little bit. They probably hesitant to move a little bit faster on the project, but that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Do we rescind the motion, guys? Or do?
I'm not rescinding my motion. I do think that the density could be affected by the issue of access. So I would prefer not to approve density until we see what the access provides for.
Motion has been carried. Go to the next one.
Can I 4-0 vote? The PDRB recommends Dead Lakes Park and Houndville Park are in compliance with the recreational open space element that the comprehensive plan is required for verification for a FERTAP grant application.
A move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Michael Moore. Second.
Second.
Got a second by Ms. Chairman. Any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries four and no.
Last item, Mr. Chairman. At last meeting, there was a variance for Mr. Cooksey. By a 3-0 vote with one abstaining, PDRB recommends readdressing the variance issue for Cooksey parcel ID 03898002R based on updated survey and permitting data. If you remember, the approval was based on survey. And the PDRB wants to go back and readdress that issue on Atlantic Street.
Can I get a motion?
A move, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Mr. Michael Moore. Can I get a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniel. Any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries four and no.
That's all to PDRB, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, Mr. Tom Sims, in reference to restryping County Road 386.
Tom Sims, County Road 386, 1730. I tried to talk before you took a vote on the, that's what the paperwork was filled out on the consent agenda. In there, there was a letter or a bid or something from Preble Rish for $59,000 for restryping 386. 386, the center line and all the reflectors from 71 to 98 was restripped last year. So the only thing left to do is the two lines on the side. Evidently, you got a grant to do this. You know, you don't have to spend all the money. You can send money back if you don't need it. The second issue I have is Preble Rish put in a list of hourly rates for all of his people. However, there was no paragraph that showed how he arrived at $59,000 or how that firm arrived at $59,000. If you look at his design, it was to relook, to look at the signage on 386 and submit a report at 20%, 30%, and 50%. I don't know, it looks like the public works could look at signs. And there's, you know, there's, there was no reference of why a 20%, 30%, and 50% report had to go in. It looks like it's a make-work deal to come up to $59,000. If you go back a couple of months, I think in July, in the minutes that said that Don Butler was sending a letter to Chipley requesting that the repaving be moved up. And then I think last meeting or meeting before last, Mr. Yeager was going to talk to Chipley about moving up the paving of 386 rather than spend money for restryping and then having to pave over everything you do, just delay it. What's the outcome on that? So it looks like you're kind of jumping the gun instead, before you get the answers. And I don't know how you get to talk before you take a vote because you consent agenda passed, blah, 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 and it's passed, and no one gets to say anything, even though I filled out the paperwork. Now, change subjects. Before your next meeting, the new law passed by the legislature this year says that before you take a vote, and it takes effect one October, you have to go out to the public for comments. So, you know, the attorney brought that up last week, last meeting. But, you know, it's hard to get up here and talk the stuff before you take a vote, and then it's a done deal. Now, you know, if you do anything, you have to come back and undo it. But I am concerned about the striping on 386.
Mr. Chairman, may I address the request? The public speaker for, nowhere on here does he request to speak prior to the consent agenda. If you would so note that on here, I would bring that up to the board prior to the consent agenda vote.
Isn't it checked on consent agenda?
It says agenda item.
Isn't there a consent agenda?
You did not check that box, Mr. Sims, and it was not noted.
Okay. So we still got an issue on, is Chipley going to move up? And why we want to spend money restryping what we just did less than a year ago?
I know Mr. Yeager's supposed to have been working on that project, Mr. Butler.
Mr. Chairman. I can share some light if you would.
There was direction to make contact with Chipley. We did, in writing, make contact with Chipley. They didn't respond timely. Did talk verbally with them. Mr. Yeager talked with them. The, our, our issue at hand was they're giving this money, they're giving grant money to design striping and signage for 386. Our desire, once we found out they had an extra $50 million this year to repave roads in small counties, was hoping they could, they could move our, our SCLP, SCLRAP, and CIGP, the three grant programs up on the list. Tommy Barfield told Mr. Yeager that they couldn't. They had that, they had that money planned for some other things. And some other things, they asked him this year for a couple of projects. Tomorrow, I can help me out. They asked for more projects this year for scrap and scop and CIGP. What we were looking at and what the board were discussing was we think it would probably make more sense to not go out and design striping. We have paint now. This, this will be designed for thermoplastics, which lasts as long as the pavement will. Paint will last a few years. So our desire was to, instead of spending this money now, go ahead and move the money forward. And because it's got to be done at a point in time when we do get money to pave a road, it's got to be done again. The design for the striping, design for signage. But that filter, they did not move our projects up on the list. So here we are now. They said this money is available, I think tomorrow, we'll tell you, this year. Like after January, I think.
Actually, when I brought it up at the previous meeting, the discussion with my grant manager was you need to get moving on this or you're going to lose the money, basically. My grant deadline on the design phase of the striping was October 1st. So as soon as Mr. Yeager had talked to Mr. Barfield, he let me know. I immediately submitted a request to my grant manager on the lap program to extend my grant, obviously, because there was no way I could get it done in a week. And so we did get an extension until the end of December. And then we had already gone out for proposals for the engineering services. They had already been ranked. And the only thing that had not been done at that point was the negotiation. Once I found out that we did have to proceed with the grant, then I began the negotiations. And that's the contract you saw in there. That's the, the one that was negotiated.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Sims. The striping we have there today, the paint and the center markers was paid for by taxpayer money here. Now, go back in here. I'm totally, totally opposed to us going out there and then, how much is this, this, what do you call it, thermoplast or?
Thermoplastics would be the striping.
To have done the sides when we done the other day, it cost us around $30,000 taxpayers to put this, the yellow line. We've done the sidelines, they're solid. You'd been another $50,000. We said with, at least the yellow line will give some help there. That will decide which side's yours and which side's mine. All right, and I may be out of order here. I may be incorrect. But I think with question of Brian, I said let's do not this $50,000. Why go out there and put this a half million dollars worth of paint and striping and all? Then they're going to come in in three years and tear the road up. Let's roll it over. Well, the grant won't allow that. And grant money is tax money. I don't like to waste money, but we voted to go ahead. And I think my colleague over here is the one that put the most on the floor that let's proceed with it. And when they do pave it, they'll rip it all up. But, you know, it's kind of a, I say, I call it wasted money, but.
But because they?
Hate and he's hired to be, they call it other things.
And they wouldn't move the paving up? They wouldn't move the paving up?
No, they would not.
You need to?
When we say move it up, we don't mean advancing on towards 2020. We want them to bring it to us.
Right.
They wouldn't do that.
Well, I understand that, but.
They say, well, you either put it down or lose it. Well, it may be another four years before they pay that road, they, the DOT. In the meantime, this. In the meantime, this, this striping and it's a lot of traffic. You live out there, you know the traffic out there, so it might prevent something, so, you know, we kind of.
Understand that completely.
Caught in a hard place.
Mr. Butler just said the paint will last several years, so the center line and the new reflectors.
Be gone in a couple of years.
Okay, well, let's come back and address Preble Rish's $59,000. There's no schedule of how the various people listed on one of those pages by their hourly rate comes up to add up to $59,000. He lists the hourly rate, and then he says it's $59,000. How does he get the $59,000?
I can ask you a question.
I actually made him reduce it to $59,000 during the negotiation. Based on, when I did the negotiations, I have an amount that DOT puts in for design. I have an amount they put in for construction and an amount they put in for CEI. The original estimate where we started was not 59. I, I actually said, that's all I'm going to pay. That's all I can pay. That's what I have in the grant, that's all I'm going to pay. And will you do it for that? And they said yes. And so that's how we reached our agreement, and that's where the contract came in.
Well, I still.
But see, I actually applied, the, the applications for Overstreet Road for the resurfacing is actually in three phases for years, 2016 and 2017. And we do not even know yet. I just applied for those this year. We don't even know yet if we're even going to get those. Those may not even be awarded.
I understand that, it might not be awarded, but my question is, if you set $59,000, there should be a schedule saying that a clerk is going to work X number of hours times what their rate is and equals this. And all the people that's going to work on it is over on the right, and then it adds up to $59,000. You know, just as, if you say the, the, the design and engineering is $120,000 and I'm only going to pay 59, that might be good, but there's no justification how you got up to 59. You just agreed to it.
Mr. Butler, is that something that we could work on? Or we could show the public how they come up with the $59,000? Or is that just how they?
I think it'd be a question to the engineers. They, they give you a price, the bottom line price, is what we're looking at. And I'm not sure, we're, we're concerned how many hours each craft is going to be there. The bottom line is what we're looking at. We know how much grant money we have, and we know we, we don't need to go above that grant amount. So, and that's the, that's the rate that DOT has said probably is going to cause to design that roadway, to design striping and signage.
So when they, I, I understand that you were able to negotiate it down. But when they submitted the original bid, was there any type of schedule of how they got to the amount that they bid originally?
No, ma'am. And actually, on this particular LAP grant, we had to start doing something new that we've not done before, and that was what was called a man-hour estimate. And I had several discussions with DOT about that, you know, in creation of that man-hour estimate, because there's no way I would know. I don't know which member of the engineering firm works on, on which job. I don't know who does the drawing, who does the copying, who does, you know, I just, I don't know that. That's why we have to contract with an engineering firm. So I had to get help from DOT even to develop the man-hour estimate for them. And I had to submit that to them before I could even begin negotiations.
So I think your point is when, when the, the bids are being submitted, that they should be submitting some type of a, a schedule of what they estimate on these various.
Man-hours.
Man-hours of what it would be. And, and that would, I would think that would assist staff who are reviewing those as well, if the engineer submitted that.
Well, if you, also, if you look at their, their little section under design, it says that they're going to go and check the signs on 386. And they're going to submit three reports. $60,000, I don't care what the DOT says the rate is, Gulf County's the one that's spending the money. It seems like $60,000 is a lot of money to ride the road, look at signs. And then nowhere does it says, well, we got to submit these three reports per a DOT regulation. Looks like it's made up stuff to come up with 69. It looks like it's very hard to justify $69,000 if you read the report. It's, it's in the agenda.
Mr. Sims, I look at lots of reports, especially the ones with the engineers, lawyers, professional services. And when it comes down to professional services, they, they, their fees is, I mean, their cost is very high. And, and I don't know how they come up with their fees. Mr. Tawon will look into it and get back with us and, and kind of let us know how they come up with that. But listening to what we go through, just, we just had them speaking about the $10,000. We spoke on the kind of why, how much it costs. We spent $40,000 for an attorney to come up here and tell us we got a less than a 50% chance of winning. They're kind of wild issues. So professional services is expensive. I don't know how they come up with it, but it's very expensive.
Well, that's, that's the reason I came. You don't know how they came up with it, I don't know how they came. It should be written down so that anybody that looks at the agenda can see how they arrived at a $59,000 proposed bill.
Do we get Mr. Tawon to work on that first?
Actually, if you go back and you look at the LAP agreement that the county signed back in a formal consent agenda, you will see, LAP grant, LAP agreements are federal dollars. They are not handled in the same way that scrap and scop and CIGP are handled. There are a ton of different rules. The files for, for one grant take up a whole filing cabinet. The requirements to submit those plans in those phases is a DOT requirement. That is what they require. They require for the submittals at certain stages because they want to make sure that these engineers are on the right track and doing them like they want them done to meet the federal guidelines.
County staff business? Thank you.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Chairman?
Just a couple of items. I'd like to request to the board, we opened bids yesterday, bid number 1213-20, the RFQ for video recording and broadcasting. This was opened yesterday. And I would ask the board that if we could hold a special meeting on Monday, the 30th, maybe at 9:00 or 10:00 a.m. We have some questions to the bidders, and I have some attorney review that I'd like to get done, that I wasn't able to get done in time for this meeting this morning. The county attorney had said that we would bring this back for a vote today. But the current contract is up October the 1st. That's the reason I'm asking for the special meeting on the 30th. We could either do that, or we could extend the current contract for a month and give us an opportunity to go through this RFQ and get our questions answered prior to making a recommendation to the board.
Yeah, that, let's do that. I move to extend it one month.
I got a motion by Mr. Michael Moore.
I'll second it.
Got a second by Mr. Mike Daniels.
Really look this thing over.
Do we have any opposed? Do we have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, sir. My next item is for information. It's in reference to our tax collector and our clerk in offices in Weewahichka, moving to the new location. Due to my absence for three weeks, I've had, it took me a while to get bids and, and recommendations on phone systems. We now have three organizations that are going to be in the same location. I asked Fairpoint to give us a price on a system that those three organizations could use, as well as AT&amp;T and the DMS, our Department of Management Services with the state. I asked them to give us a price to do the lease and contract that we currently have at this location for the voice-over internet protocol system so that we would coordinate those offices up there with what we have here. The Fairpoint price was, just equipment cost was over $4,000. The cost, their bid was a little confusing. But the bid cost for their monthly services was very comparable to the actual phone cost rental or the lease that we would have with the VoIP system. Therefore, I, I made the decision to go on with the VoIP system that we currently have. It keeps us consistent. It requires no purchase of equipment for the county. Whereas the Fairpoint bid did require that we purchase equipment, it would have been the same type of equipment that we got rid of several years ago here. Every time we had lightning strikes or power surges or things, that equipment had to be replaced. It took our services down. The VoIP system, we, we, there is some equipment we have to buy, but it's very low compared to what we would have to purchase with Fairpoint. In saying all of that, just to give the board an update, when I came back last week, I had to make a request for that new service. I did not get that bid from AT&amp;T for the VoIP until Tuesday of last week. It takes, according to the state, when I called them and asked them to expedite my request for service, they said it takes 25 to 30 days to get this service up. It would have been comparable with the new equipment installation with Fairpoint. I'm not sure of their exact timeframe, but it would have taken time to order equipment with that as well. We are in the process of installing all of the Cat 5 cables and everything necessary to get them moved this week. The plan is to move them on Friday. What I suggested to both Ms. Shirley and Ms. Becky was to give them an option once they move on Friday. And the reason we have to move them on Friday, and we, we don't want to go into the new fiscal year, but as well, we have state systems that have been ordered, and those will be in on Friday. That will get their DMV systems working for the tax collector and those types of things. So then we'd have things in two places. I am going to provide the tax collector and the clerk with cell phones, and I'd like the public to know what those numbers are. The tax collector number in the interim, just in case we can't get the service going by regular phone. Tax collector's numbers will be 227-5628. And the clerks will be 227-5630. And that is just the Weewah location for both offices until I can get that full service up. They will, as of Friday, they will have back services and cell phones, and their state systems will be working. But we won't have internet and all of that until I can get the installation. I have asked for expedited service with the state. They're going to do all they can to get that to me, but we have to have physical equipment ordered, and it is on order. But I did say that I would pay extra to expedite this request. I just have not heard what that date will be. So their new location, for anyone that doesn't know, will be on North Third Street. This is the old Health Department building. Their physical addresses, even though there's one door on North Third Street, and we're going to put up signage and things like that, but their physical addresses will be 151 North Third Street for the tax collector and 153 North Third Street for the clerk. And we had to do that, 911 said, because they have separate telephone numbers, they had to have separate physical location or physical addresses. Even though you walk in one door, there are physically going to be two addresses there at that one location. Any questions, comments, before I move forward on that? I know it's, it's been a process, and we've had several things. I'd like to thank Maintenance, they've done a tremendous job and done a lot of work in there and are continuing to work to be able to meet this deadline, so. Next item, I was supposed to get into the consent agenda, and I apologize, I have too much paperwork on my desk. I'd like to ask the board, Commissioner Yeager let everyone know at the last meeting that there is going to be a Gulf Power Economic Symposium in Sandestine, September 29th to October 1st. Commissioner Yeager would like to attend that. If I could just get the board to approve that travel for him, please.
Get a motion?
Motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniels. Can I get a second?
A second.
Got a second by Ms. Bryant. Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, sir. My last request, in my absence as well, there were three bills for UniFirst. That's another thing I've not had time to get to, is to get us a bid out and an RFP for Uniform Services for Public Works. Could I get the board to approve three invoices for them in the amount of 5146, 5884, and 3912?
Can I get a motion?
I move.
Got a motion by Ms. Bryant? Can I get a second?
Second.
Got a second by Mr. Mike Daniels. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, that's all.
Got one thing. I've got our Section 125 cafeteria plan. It's for our employee pre-tax benefits. It will reflect our new benefits starting October 1st. I'd ask the board to approve it upon attorney review.
Got a motion on? Got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniels, Mr. Michael Moore?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniels. Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Houston.
Just to update you, as y'all know, Bay Medical Center is not, no longer running EMS service in Panama City, Bay County. Bay County is going to take it over October the 1st. We had a contract with Mexico Beach to provide service, EMS service there. They're supplementing us per month on that. That contract's going to be carried over to the county, and their attorney will be getting hold of our attorney to work out the details.
Great, great, great.
David, we already did, David?
Yes, sir, I got one more. You know, we got, with the finalized budget, we'll be having to perform our capital improvement schedule. One thing to caution board as we look down the road, especially on the DOT five-year plans, as we were referencing in discussion earlier. Do you get the money? Those programs are very fluid, and you could lose them or, or get them. So just keep that in mind as you make your long-range plans, that they're not absolute. It's the reason, I got the caveat in the capital improvement schedule for DOT for that reason. They can pull them anytime if there's a bigger need. And they frown upon us doing it, but they, they freely do it, so. And last time, Mr. Chairman, as in my other job, I have a very critical truck that's down. If I can be excused to go take care of it. And if the board don't need me for anything else, it's signal seven. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, I do have one thing. I had actually emailed you on it a couple of weeks ago. We actually have our list of prioritized applicants for the CDBG program and the list of our pre-approved contractors. And I need the board's approval on those. How do you want me to handle it? Do you want me to read the contractors, the list of contractors, and then have you approve those? And then the list of homeowners? I, I know that a couple of you are going to have to abstain on the homeowners list. So I, I just didn't know if you wanted me to handle them one at a time, or if you wanted me to do them all at once.
Recommendation from the board.
It really don't matter to me when you do them all at one time, which I'm going to have to abstain anyway, so it really don't matter.
First of all, on the, on the pre-approved contractor list, we have Kathy Construction, Bryan Co. Services, Construction Management Partners, Crest Enterprises and Land Development, Florida Homes, Inc., Gulf to Bay Development and Construction, Jay Harrington and Associates, Longleaf Development, Raymond A. Drysback, Unison Development, and Winterfell Construction.
Got a motion on the construct, contractors?
I move.
Got a motion by Ms. Bryant?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniels. Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries for or no?
Thank you. The next list, I'll, if, if it's okay, I'll call out the names and, and for, for everybody else's information as well, I would like to say whether it's going to be renovation or new construction, if that's. whether it's going to be renovation or new construction, if that's okay. We have Dennis Anderson. He will be new construction. Charlotte and Walter C. Brooks, renovation. Susan Moore and Ann Murray, new construction. Ida and Sammy Porter, new construction. Jason Ernest, renovation. Dolores Coven, renovation. Olita Bowers, renovation. Mary Ellen Butler, new construction. Nancy Williams, new construction. Joanna and Rodney Levens, new construction. Sheila Lucas, renovation. Holly Cargill, new construction. Artie May Gay, renovation.
I have a motion on the floor.
Question before we put a motion. Ms. Kapinski, this is the CDBG. Now, this does not include ship.
Actually, $125,000 ship funds was obligated with this. I believe you noticed in your consent agenda, the three of the names that you saw.
But there's still some applicants for ship only. Is that correct?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Those will come a little later on.
Okay, all right. This is CDBG. Okay, motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniel?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bryant. Motion carries with two. Abstain.
And the reason for me abstaining is because of relationship impacts.
Reason for me abstaining is relationship.
We had to abstain, but we still got the majority too, so it passes.
That's all I have.
Mr. Michael. Our contract, it's with DOC for emergency evacuation for the jail. It's a three-year contract that we have with them. We've never used it, thank God, but it expires at the end of the month. We need permission for the chairman to sign this. We made two changes. One was a telephone number, and the one was a title. But the county attorney's already approved this last week. We just need the chairman to sign.
Can I get a motion on the floor? Got a motion by Mr. Mike Moore?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniel. Do I have any opposed? Opposed, motion carries for and off.
And it's good for three years and can be extended for one additional three-year term, so that's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, first item, information, TNC, the Nature Conservancy is going to facilitate a meeting Thursday from 1:00 to 4:00 in the county ELC to do watershed, talking Jefferson, Waculla, Franklin, Guff Counties. And we've attended a couple of these meetings in Bay County, Walton, Bay, and Guff. We've attended one here in Guff with Waculla, Franklin, and Guff. But same type meeting. The TNC is trying to figure out how to get a group of counties together something common with all the counties that may, may even help influence the consortium on how to spend DT money when the fire money comes in. But just for information, 1:00 to 4:00 publicly notice anyone can attend ELC for the Nature Conservancy meeting to do with watershed. Next item, information, Chairman Smiley and I attended a meeting in West Palm Beach on Wednesday. We travel Tuesday. Come back Wednesday night about midnight. It was a consortium meeting. Mr. Jaeger couldn't attend the meeting, so the board placed me as an alternate for that meeting. The issue at hand is there's 23 counties vying for the money. Each county is trying to get their fair share of the money. This is on the heels of the Treasury Department releasing some proposed rules on how to apply for the money once the fire money has been turned loose. So we set another meeting for October 25th. It's going to be on Friday in Tallahassee. The chair and I plan to attend that meeting. Also, the next meeting is already planned. It's in conjunction with the FSC Legislative Conference in Daytona in November. But very important meeting, and I would certainly recommend that someone attend these meetings. Go, we need to get our fair share. We, I would say to you, to some degree, to partly a high degree, as they just joined a meeting with 23 counties vying for their fair share and trying to figure out how to get their part of the money. So we've got to be there to get our money. Anyone got any questions on the consortium meeting? It's a necessary evil for us to be there.
Questions on the consortium meeting?
Mr. Chairman, next item is received yesterday. It came in yesterday as unsigned letter from Chair Gaskin. I'm going to give you a copy of it. Making a recommendation or a request for the old courthouse space in Weeweeaw. It's somewhat time-sensitive. In a nutshell, Ms. Gaskin, she speaks of possibility of a donation of the building, which she understands that that can't be. She is, she's saying, we wish, in that second paragraph, we wish at least for a dollar a year with a 10-year lease, we will be responsible for the utilities and toward the upkeep. And toward that end, we can also look at the acquisition of other funding for the needed restoration. Of course, this will have to be with the board's endorsement. Now, in talking with our attorney, well, we do have an issue with the walls in the back leaking and the green, the green mold growing in the back in the old extension service office part. And also, we've got the issue with the water in the basement around the electrical. The attorney is concerned of leasing the building out, and we know we have those problems. And there's no problem doing it. He thinks there's no problem making this lease or making the lease. But we need to have a good, clean contract that is said in the contract. We've got those issues. We're trying to solve those problems and those issues. And also, we need to delineate the part of the building that North Florida Child Development can be in and the part they can't be in. And no one at this point in time can be in the very back. That's not, that's not a place to be. I would say too, if the board could agree to a quick meeting Monday, give your attorney time to get back and give some substance to what we're trying to do here. The North Florida Child Development would like to be in that building. We have, as of first day October, we have moved out the clerk and the tax collector has moved over to across the street to the old Health Department building and try to figure out how to make it work, and they would like to stay in the building, how to keep the building going. So she does mention at the very end of the letter that "I will work in concert with you all to transfer utilities supplied to the end of the month to ensure that my operations are not stopped. If I could be advised immediately, we are prepared to do so." So my request to her a week ago, 10 days ago, was, you know, we are, we're going to let the utilities, the city of Weeweeaw, and of course, let the co-op know that as of October 1st, we aren't be responsible for those bills. And I would like for her to concur that she is going to have it in their name, in North Florida Child Development's name. But for the board's consideration, she's got an offer here for a dollar a year, at least 10 years. And she mentioned of some upkeep. My recommendation is to let the attorney help define what that would be. And we normally are leasing out a building, discuss some problems, and so we can tie those down in that agreement.
Recommendation from the board?
I've had a chance and opportunity to look at this now, her proposal, and really, I have no issue with it. But with that being said, you know, I want to make sure our attorney is 100% with it before I finalize it. I mean, I, you know, I think it's the best thing going for the north end of the county is to let Ms. Gaskin in on that building. She, I know Ms. Gaskin. She's a push hard. She'll go out and find grant dollars or whatever she's got to do to bring that courthouse up to par. So, you know, I'm in full support with it. I just want to make sure that our attorney is okay with the proposal.
Recommendation from the?
Comment, Mr. Chairman, from me. I've been involved with this project for quite a while and back and forth, and I want to say on behalf of Ms. Gaskin here, she wants to work with us. Hopefully, we can come to a great, some good middle ground here. We've got to keep this building. If we abandon the building, it'll go down. And it's our history right here in Guff County. The county was formed in 1925, and I have a lot of interest in it because a lot of my family helped, was factored in as one of my relatives, was a senator for Calhoun County that helped get Guff County formed. And a lot of my family members served as public servants in Guff County, so I have deep roots there. And I think, I think we're very close. All indications from Ms. Gaskin, she's willing to work, but she's in the same boat that we are. Little thing called shortage of money. Maybe we can come together and work on something to get it moving. We want to keep her there. Truly, she says she has employed people and keep this building open. And she has some great ideas, but I just implement that, Mr. Chairman.
I also had the opportunity to go up and Ms. Gaskin brought me through the courthouse. It is a beautiful building. I think it's a treasure to the county. And I think that the county needs to work with Ms. Gaskin to revive that building. I was shocked that it, that it was in the condition that it is in the back. It's unfortunate. I know it didn't happen overnight. And I know Ms. Gaskin has tried to work for quite a while to get some assistance with that building. So I think that it's time that we do step up and work with Ms. Gaskin. I would like to see us do whatever we need to do today in order to keep her there and allow her to take over the utilities. But I would, I'd like to hold off on the long-term agreement to make sure that, and I don't know if that's what you're asking for from the board. I know it's subject to attorney review, but I think there's a lot of details to be worked out here. I don't think we need to just lease the building to Ms. Gaskin and walk away. We have a lot of responsibility here, and we have to work together to find that grant money. I do, I've been contacted by quite a few people in the county concerned about the building. So that's my.
Would you want to put that into some kind of a motion then that she can proceed in the building or whatever?
Yes. I would like to, and you tell me what you think, but I would like to make a motion that maybe we enter into a, or extend her lease agreement for a matter of six months and let her take over the utilities while we work out the details of a more long-term lease, just so she can stay in for now.
Yeah, I think the question is going to be come October 1, though, is she going to pay a dollar a year lease or is she going to pay $2,000? I mean, she's leasing it now for what, a couple thousand a month?
We could have a meeting Monday, give the attorney time to take a look at it and see if he can tie down some more details with her on how far would No Florida Child Development go in getting the building back in shape. She's paying about $2,500 a month now, ballpark, rough ballpark. Didn't realize she was here.
Would that allow time to?
That'd keep her there. Come October 1, she's there.
I think what I heard Ms. Bryant say is, first, let me pay the utilities until y'all get this worked out.
That was one of my questions.
Can you just make a motion to let me handle that for you? Because that sounds like the most, that keeps the doors from closing.
Well, that shows you operating in good faith.
And I'll take care of that. We can just go and change the.
And it could be a month-to-month tenancy, so that when we're ready, we can enter into the long-term lease.
And then that gives us not, we don't have a knee-jerk kind of thing going on here. We can work out all the long-term.
That'd work.
I'll pay the bills on the utilities, the water sewer, whatever. Just transfer those to my name.
Starting October 1.
The only thing changing would be the chair will start paying the utility bills first day October. It would give us time to work on agreement.
Meeting Monday.
I mean.
Chairman's call.
I mean, I can go there now and get it, or y'all release it and we'll transfer it. That needs to be made into.
There's an issue with a long-term. We know we have problems. We got, we have problems with the building. And we want to make sure that's in our agreement with No Florida Child Development.
And that was one of the concerns that Mr. Novak said. He wanted to make sure that the building was safe. And he wanted to, you know, before he turned it completely. And I need to make sure it's safe for my employees as well. So, but until that occurs, can that be as?
I will revise my motion and make the motion that we allow Ms. Gaskin's organization to take control of all the utility bills and transfer them to her organization, and she will be responsible to pay all the utilities.
Commissioners?
Beginning October 1.
Beginning October 1.
In the short term.
Effective October 1.
If you could, I've done a lot of these transferring of utilities between the Health Department and such, and they will not allow her to take over the current bills that we have. We will have to discontinue the county's billing and allow her to create her own contract with those utility companies. So if we could just make that clear that. We did that when we took the Health Department over.
Yeah, I'm good. Second notion. We could be tied up for two years.
Correct.
No, we're not. But we could be tied up in this long term. In the meantime, you don't have any power, so. Thank you, Ms. Gaskin.
I got a motion on the floor by Ms. Bryant. Second by Mr. Mike Moore. Do I have any opposed? Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all.
Sheriff?
Yes, one issue I want to touch base with Mr. Butler on. I was up there at the Health Department yesterday, you know, with Sacred Heart and all, but I had a chance to tour the building up there, Mr. Butler. We have major issues up there with that building.
That's a new building.
That's the brand-new building that has the roof on it that's leaking and probably, I don't think I'd be exaggerating, maybe 25 different places throughout that whole building. It may be condense coming down. I don't know. It may be rain coming through the roof. But my question is, you know, that is a new building, and I think where I'm going at is the contractor reliable for it, that built that building. But I don't want you to give me an answer today. What I'm asking you to do is research that by selecting, you know, that we have major issues up there with that building, and research it and come back to the board with us on how we can attack that problem, because something is going to have to be done. If there's not anything done, then we're going to be dealing with mold issue and one thing, then the other. So if you would, if you would research that and let us know.
That's all I have.
Couple of things, and Mr. Mike Moore, I appreciate you bringing up about the Health Department. And Sacred Heart did come in yesterday. We had a ribbon cutting and fair turnout, and the weather was gloomy, but I hope we get, that project gets, or that service very beneficial to not only the citizens of the Weeweeaw area, but also to Guff County. Yesterday, I attended the ACF meeting up in Bluntstown. We're going to have our semi-annual meeting in Helen, Georgia, which I will not attend. Lost nothing in Helen, Georgia. I'll attend the spring one in Appalachia Cola. But we did get the Florida Legislature, Senator Monford, we got a half million dollars set to one side. Of that, $150,000 is earmarked to do a flow study on the Appalachia Cola River, determine exactly how much water that Appalachia Cola needs for their oysters and also Guff County and Liberty, and the six counties are Tupelo or Honey Flows and all. So I'll give you a report on that. Mr. Our newly appointee, Mr. Gunnery, he attended, and he's all signed up and ready to go. Mr. Chairman, that's all. Other than Mr. Lewis back here, Jake, as soon as we get through this rainy season, we got a lot of work, haven't we? We surely have. And I know Mark with the Meadows, yesterday, they were up in the north end of the county spraying. And I don't mean spraying in the daylight, but they were going around treating stagnant areas.
around treating stagnant areas, the truck was, I think, was up there pretty much entire day. I saw it yesterday morning going to Bluntstown, I saw it when I came back, coming on back down here. But anyway, I wanna thank you gentlemen for what you do for us, we get these roads all fixed up. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Butler, I'd ask you a question on the, down by the, in a coastal, up under the bridge, on this side of the bridge, is that county property or is that city property? The Highlandview Bridge?
The county owns no property on this side, not the Highlandview Canal. So, underneath the bridge would have blown DOT, right away, a DOT, Highway 98, but that's all in the city, the city's on this side, the county has none. On the west side of the canal, east side of the bridge, north side of the bridge, county does have a park, Highlandview Boat Ground, but nothing on this side.
I just know lots and lots of people go fishing, and families go down there and there's no restroom, there's no garbage, nowhere to put the garbage, so people just put on the ground, there's no restroom down there. So, I was just trying to figure out, was there anything that the county could do to try to help out with that problem, but if it's the city? Do we have anything from the public?
Kristy McElroy, 1311 Woodward Avenue, Port St. Joe, and I'll be brief, but these things did go into the record, and it specifically, one of them is concerning the complaint filed by Tom Sims against Mr. Jaeger. There's three items that I'm entering into the record, and they've been noted in that document. And then the last thing that I think it's important, and the reason I bring that up is because it was taxpayer expense. The last item is just concerning, that was brought up in the very beginning, the lawsuit that Mr. Jim Garth and the Gulf County PAC brought against three of the commissioners and also me. I have the bills that pertain to the county attorney, and then, of course, I had a conversation, so those are submitted in. As well, information on this groundless, baseless lawsuit and the theory that was used to sue all of us, I think the public has a right to know what that theory was, it's called Katz-Paul, doesn't apply, but it still was tried in, to go forth in a complaint against us all. So, anyway, because I wanna be, don't wanna be seen as trying to sneak something into the record or anything like that, I wanted to let you know that I did give Ms. Carey a copy of those items, okay? Thank you.
Do we have anything else from the public? Have anything else from the public? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
You got it.
Got it from Mr. Mike Moore, second by Mr. Mike Daniel. Thank everybody for coming up.